Again, access. The purpose of this is really access.
I've got a couple of people in the queue. I had technological difficulties and see them. So Lynn, sorry about that, Lynn.
Thanks. This is a great pilot program and a great program in general. And I was just curious about the opt-out rate. Are you able to analyze the metrics? And are you seeing like a large group of employees who are opting out from a single company or is it spread throughout?
That's a really good question. Yeah, with such a low number of employers there, for the larger employers, when we have seen kind of a higher than average opt-out rate there, it really skews the average. So there were a couple of the larger ones that had higher opt-out rates. But it's a little bit, it's too early to draw any real trends with just 30. But we'll be reporting, we'll be really transparent about all this data. We're going to put monthly reports on the website. And, you know, to some extent, it's tempting to sort of circle back with those employers that had higher opt-out rates and say, what did you say? You know, what's going on? But it's really not, number one, it's really not our job to do that and it's not really appropriate for us to do that. And number two, we're about to, on July 1st, we are opening this up to about 300,000 employers, right? So when we scale up, there's going to be no, there's going to be no reality in which we can really micro-manage each employer experience. So we're trying to really, truly test it out and kind of go hands off. But we, you know, I should say with regard to data analysis, we have a problem, the problem of the rich really, in that academics and researchers are very, very interested in sort of salivating over getting this data. So there will be no shortage of analysis of the data along the lines of what you're talking about.
I'm sure that they are very anxious to see this. One other quick question was on the ESG fund, are you seeing people electing into that fund yet?
It will be available for the July 1st launch. Yeah, so the ink is barely dry on the contract, so since we added it later.
Very exciting, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So I think we kind of covered all this. Average monthly contribution, about $90 a month, which is again, right on what we had expected. So that total assets, you know, it's very early days, $136,000. In a matter of months, we'll be, you know, in the seven figures and we'll be kind of growing on a vertical curve there. And excited to come back to you if you would have us back so that we can report our progress. So here's, this is a little bit more exciting version of a pilot update here. So these are some of our pilot employers. Up in the upper left, this is Yolanda and Lorenzo Harris of Janico Building Services here, based here in North Island Sacramento area. It's a janitorial services company. They were the number one, very, very first employer to sign up with us. And they were actually engaged in the legislative process as well. So they've been champions for this for a long time. And I won't read his quote, but, you know, Mr. Harris got up at our press conference when we launched the pilot and said, you know, I don't usually like government mandates. I'm not usually into that, but we need this, I need this, I've been waiting for something like this. And, you know, he's been really excited to be able to facilitate this. In the lower left, Kristin Evans owns an independent bookstore in the Haight-Ashbury District in San Francisco. She's another wonderful advocate. And on the right here, this is Triple E Trucking down in Bakersfield. And, you know, this is one of the, the day we visited them a few weeks ago, we tweeted this out. What Tekla said there was, you know, it couldn't be easier, which is exactly what we want to hear. And it was funny, when Jonathan Herrera and I went to sit with her, it was a really short meeting because she just said, it's going great. I don't really have much to say. It's, you know, it's easy. It's easy. What else does her say? And so, you know, we just said, okay, well, we'll take yes for an answer. That's great. So, and there's nothing really special about this situation. They have actually quite a variable workforce in the trucking industry. So one could argue that that's actually a more complex payroll situation because they're, you know, they're folks that are getting paid and any given payroll period is volatile and then the amounts are changing. So, but shoot, you know. So we hope that that experience is emulated repeatedly when we launch for real. But suffice to say, we're getting a lot of positive feedback, which isn't to say we aren't getting any constructive criticism. We've gotten some of that and we've made tweaks, but we're quite happy with that. And then just kind of stepping back bigger picture, challenges and opportunities for us, obviously going from 60 employers to 300,000 employers overnight. Scaling this up is going to be an operational challenge, but we're ready for it. We have great partners. And I think, you know, basically balancing that kind of high-touch TLC to, and, you know, high-value customer service with the need to be automated is one of the challenges that we'll be grappling with. But really, I think I would say our biggest challenge is that lack of a budget for marketing and advertising, right? The legislature was really serious about making this self-sustaining on fees and we respect that and it's a great talking point for us. And it's appropriate, but it means that every dollar we spend out of that loan is a dollar that's coming out of the pockets of our savers. So we try to be very, very, very careful about all of those expenditures and really limit them. So what it means is that we need to rely on essentially grassroots and peer-to-peer awareness raising and organizing. So our staff spends a lot of time and the treasurer's staff spends a lot of time out in the fields at events, really, you know, giving Cal Savers 101 presentations and trying to spread the word through peer networks and really trying to leverage existing networks rather than recreate the wheel by identifying leaders in communities who already have the attention of people and who are already respected and really figuring out how to get them to help us, you know, be our voice really, and, you know, modify the messages so that it's properly targeted and culturally competent in the communities throughout California that need to hear from us. So in some, to some degree, we're kind of taking a page out of the covered California and EITC playbooks where they, you know, they tried to do all this as well, although the difference is that they had, you know, plenty of grant funding to do their outreach work with. So we're constantly being more and more creative, which is one of the reasons it's great to have this audience with all of you, your leaders in the community throughout the state. Your members are leaders in the communities, teachers are natural leaders. So we would, I'm just going to skip to that. So really, I think what we're asking out for you is, number one, you know, be aware of what we're doing. It's our worlds overlap, but to the extent that we can hop onto your existing communications channels with your members, so whether that's newsletters, emails, paper mail, the website, social media, any kind of communications channels where you're already communicating with your members, we would really, really appreciate a paragraph or a page or a blurb or a link or some kind of shout out to what we're doing so that we can help raise awareness among your members. Now, of course, your members are fortunate in that they have a pension, but I guarantee you, they are either married to somebody or have a child or a parent or a cousin or, you know, a neighbor who will be affected by Cal Savers either as an employer or an employee. And we would love to use, you know, to partner with your members to help get the word out. In-person events as well. So if there are workshops in the community that you've already organized and would be willing to give us either five minutes or an hour, we can do, we can do any kind of version of our pitch that you'd like. It would, every little bit helps us get the word out. So that's really how we're going to make this program a success, is by kind of getting the word out through existing leadership networks in the state. So that is our big ask of you. And you can either, you have my contact information in the packets. Jonathan Herrera will be our, is our lead on this and you will get used to seeing his name. And really, that's it at the end. There are a couple of extra slides in the appendix if you'd like to look at those or if you have questions. I'm happy to answer questions about that. But thank you very much for the invitation to speak with you and hope to engage with you in the future.
Great. Thanks, Katie. Are there any other questions from the committee about Cal Savers?
Did I come off?
You came off. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Dana.
All right. Hi, Katie. Thank you very much. I think it's a great program, a great presentation, but as you went through it, I have a bunch of questions, so I apologize. I happen to live 15 miles south of the Oregon border, so I see the ads that come out for the Oregon Savers. They have a great ad campaign. Somewhere down the line, you're going to be able to do something similar. So it's been fun watching that. Look forward to it. As the federal stuff moves through all its channels, what are you seeing between, the conflict between the state programs and the federal program? If the feds come out with a program, are the states going to say, are the states going to say, oh, great, there's going to be a federal program? Or are we going to say, you know, you're detracting from our program? What do you think?
Yeah, that's a question that we think about a lot these days and I've spent my fair share of time in DC this year engaging with Hill staffers on this. So it's two, the short answer is, there's not a problem and it's going to be good for us and we're going to get to keep doing what we're going to do. The detail is that there are basically two tracks going forward. The bill that's moving this year, the Secure Act, would not establish a secure choice style federal program. That would be later. The one that's going through this year would most substantially sort of liberalize opportunities for open multiple employer plans. And that's, that's a good thing. If, if, from our perspective, that doesn't conflict with anything we're doing and that could exist side by side with what we're doing. So if, especially, I think those could be much more successful if there's a mandate in place alongside that. But, you know, allowing small businesses to join together to create plans, that's great. It's a good thing. Doesn't really get in our way. Now, in a couple of years, if Congress does move on what they're calling Secure Act 2.0, which would create a federal employer mandate like what we have here, we have been very clear with members of Congress, that's a great thing. If that could have been done 10 years ago, we wouldn't really need to have Cal Savers and Oregon Saves and Illinois Clear Choice. And that's a good thing in the world, right? We want everybody in the country to have access. But please grandfather us in and allow us to keep doing this, right? So with the handful of states, basically the five states that are active right now, we cover more than a third of the uncovered population in the country. So we have a really great running start here. So let us keep doing this. Let us keep accumulating assets. We can present insights for the federal efforts and, and that's been received very positively so far. So I don't, of course, nothing's, you know, never say never, but the leadership and the committees that we've engaged with have said that that would be their intention so far.
Hopefully you don't run into any complications like our pension systems have with Social Security and scenes that were offset, those of us that participate and define benefits in non-Social Security states. So you were talking about rate changes. So there were several items, so like withdrawals, rate changes, opting in. Are you going to have windows? Is this totally open? Are people going to be allowed to bounce in, bounce out, bounce back in?
Yes, they will. So there's a, there are a couple of stages. So once we get the roster, we immediately, from the employer, we immediately send basically a welcome packet with the disclosures to the employees. And from the moment they get that, they have 30 days to opt out. If they don't opt out within that period, then we automatically enroll them. But they can opt out at any time. They could opt out on day 31 or at year five. And if they want to opt out at day 31 and then come back in on, you know, day 95, they can do that. So we, you know, we wanted to be sensitive to people's kind of changing financial situations and encourage them, if they can't do it right now because of a particular cash flow need, then come in in a few months. So yes, they can come in and out.
And then you mentioned rollover, that people could take their funds out of Cal Savers and roll it into 401K even employer further down the line.
Another IRA, yeah.
Another IRA.
And then it would have to go Roth to Roth or traditional.
They go to work for another employer that does not offer that? Can they roll their former IRA into Cal Savers?
Yes.
So will that work both ways?
Yes.
Okay. And for those that are employed by a mandated employer, can they do it voluntarily?
Yes, they can.
How did they work that, if their employer's not doing payroll?
It's a really good question. So what the first step for an employee who wants to participate, who works at a non-mandated employer, would be to go to our website and opt themselves in, just like the gig workers would, and link their bank account basically. And then they can, the second step would be to go to their employer and say, hey, employer, I just joined this thing on my own. You didn't nudge me into it. I voluntarily joined it. Would you be so kind as to facilitate the payroll deduction for me, just like you might for my United Way contribution or my parking contribution or whatever? That employer may, that non-mandated employer may choose to facilitate that if they want to, but they don't have to. We can't, we can't require them to do that.
And employers that are non-compliant?
There's a penalty structure, so it's in the statute.
That's a good phrase, penalty structure.
Yes, yes. And I should say, you know, we want to, part of making this as easy as possible and free is that, you know, we want this to be a thing that employers want to do, actually. And we will be using a carrot approach as long as, you know, for the near short term. But it's on the books already. The penalty structure's on the books and we'll be reminding people of it. And it's a pretty substantial penalty for continued non-compliance, $750 per employee.
Yeah, that's, that can add up.
And again, that doesn't mean they have to join Cal Savers. That means they could go out and start, offer something else. And again, that doesn't mean that we're requiring them to, you know, to make a contribution or a match or anything like that. It's just really.
And they just have to provide evidence that they are offering something else.
And the evidence really just takes the form of, we ask them to come to our website and do this 90-second self-reporting exemption, which just says, here's my name, this is the kind of plan I offer, check. I certify this is true and then, you know, submit.
Very cool. So a couple partnerships you might want to consider, the Department of Education. Keith, I'm speaking for your boss, I guess. But I think if you reach out to the Department of Ed, they have contacts and county offices. Those county offices have contacts in all the districts. Most districts now have websites. You could even go as far as maybe even asking them to send letters home with their kids because we do do that in various schools. So I think that's a really good idea to try to reach out to Tony Thurman and his crew. And then labor organizations. Definitely hit up a partnership with them.
Thank you. Appreciate those suggestions.
Absolutely. I think it's a fabulous program. I'm excited about it. And I know Kevin from a long way back and when he was developing this and we used to have conversations, so it's really exciting to see it come to fruition.
Yeah. Well, it took 11 years.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of talk to say that.
You asked us for an ask and I don't see anyone else in the queue. And so I guess I would, I would comment that I think, I've been on the board eight years and we've been talking about that. We've heard from, you know, folks at the beginning stages of this on our board. And so I think that there's a lot of support for any kind of, any kind of promotion of, you know, some kind of secure retirement for workers in California. So I would just say that I would assume we would work, we would work with our staff to figure out creative ways that we can partner together because I think it kind of, we're sort of like, we want to lift all boats. We want to make sure teachers and all workers in California have a secure retirement. So I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but I would imagine, unless there's other comments, Nora, you have, I would imagine that we'd be happy to lend any support that is appropriate.
Thank you.
Got one more comment, Nora?
No, I just got stuck on the opt-out thing and how it's 30% of folks. And thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. But I think that if we put it into context, sometimes it's not that people don't want to. $90 is a lot for somebody who's in a working family. So I keep thinking about how more education, we need, education has to be the key. And so in addition to some of these institutional settings, right, Department of Education, labor groups, I think the community piece is really important because particularly in certain communities, trust needs to be built as to, okay, why would I give you $90 of my check when I don't know if I can afford food and all sorts of other things? And so education, the right messengers and community partners, and there's a lot of other organizations I'm happy to share with you as well. But yeah, I think we make assumptions about why the opt-out is, about like, oh, somebody just doesn't want to put money into retirement, but I think a lot of it has to do with financial need and where people are. And it's hard to think about, I'm going to have a retirement plan by the time I'm older and I can't afford to pay for stuff right now. So it's the big sort of, I think, challenge that we have. And I think we have it with our teachers and I think we have it with everybody else. And I think we have to figure out how to make that, you know, long-term, really, this is an investment in your future and it's super hard.
It's that long-term, I just, the pattern we keep hearing is, it's about financial literacy and touching them early, like kindergarten, for, you know, teaching people from the beginning the beauty of compounded interest. But to get people thinking long-term, I totally agree with you, Nora. It's like, like our part-time faculty are just trying to like pay rent. So to put $25 into a savings account sounds like too much. And so I think financial literacy and encouraging that long-term thinking and sort of foregoing short-term expenses for the long-term investment is so critical. So, and certainly what you're doing is a big part of that. So we're excited about seeing it come to reality this year. And thanks so much for taking time. And Eric, it's great to see you in the audience from back in the day and good luck to the team. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's an incredible hurdle that they've overcome. I mean, if we were a for-profit insurance company and we said the challenge is to take on the state of California and you're going to be focused on small businesses and small accounts, you wouldn't do it. So this, to achieve this scale and over this time period and run a gauntlet of legislation and litigation at the same time is, is absolutely, it's an incredible accomplishment now to be at the starting line. It really is. Because there's a lot of obstacles to get to that from a commercial model. So you've done incredible work, your team. Incredible.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. And Katie, we will say, we'd love to have you back. I don't know, we'll work with, you know, what the timing is in a year, but certainly I think there's going to be a lot of growth this year, so we'd love to have a report back sometime soon. Thanks. All right. Ashish. We are going to item nine, our Pension Solution Update. And just for the audience, you know, we're going to, this is our last open, regular board meeting, open session item. And then we are going to go into closed session. And so just for the audience members, we'll go into closed session in the back and then we'll be coming back for board governance. The timing is 2:45 for board governance. As you know, our board, it could be earlier than that and we will definitely let staff know so that they can notify the audience. Okay? All right. All right, Ashish.
Good morning.
Prashant Mittal is our Pension Solution Project Director.
Since he has been leading this project, we have made significant improvement. He made some changes and the project is in the track and for ultimate successful. I don't know if you're aware of that, Prashant and I have worked together for 20 years and many times I look good because of him. So. I'm not sure if I agree with that. So we have a, this time, I think, a few board members mentioned to us, you know, we just provide some metrics, where we are in the project, little bit history about it, the roadmap, the objectives. And we share about the governance and the organization, what Prashant did since he's leading this project. And we'll provide you the updates, the budget, the functional routes and what the challenges and mitigation we are facing and then upcoming activities. So before I will go, the roadmap, I think I will request Kassandra to give you just a refresh where we are.
All right, thank you. I think that all of the board members got this placemat and commented on the, when it began. And I wanted to just go back a little bit farther and I appreciate the feedback about, you know, maybe having a roadmap or some sort of timeframe of when we started. But just to put it in context, and this is going to be important as we move into the budget discussion in July, is we started the Future State Architecture Initiative, which was trying to look at what we were going to be needing relative to our technology needs in the future, back, I think, around 2010. Now, I'm probably not exactly correct as I'm just, it was around that time. But we started estimating and doing some pre-work on the needs of the organization. And then in 2013, when we got those, a pretty good estimate on what we were going to need to do, we went to the legislature and asked for $213 million to be appropriated, to set aside for five years to put in a technology system. We hadn't engaged with a contractor yet. We needed to go out to bid. And so we had, we worked with L.R. Wexler to help us build our requirements for the contract and we went out to bid and entered an engagement with CGI for $136.4 million. And we signed that contract in 2015. And at that point, the board approved a budget overall with, to cover CGI's costs, which is including SAG-Teck and then CalSTRS and other vendors' costs with a contingency of $251.8 million. So that's what we started with, with our budget. And then last year, from the time that we signed the contract and how things have changed in the environment and what our needs changed in the organization and the scale of what we were doing, we renegotiated and added time to the contract with CGI. And we negotiated an additional $34 million with CGI, so their contract is now $170.4 million and projected that we would be finished with the project in 2022. So we added 30 months to the project. The board at the time approved an interim budget just to cover CGI's costs of $34 million. And we will be coming back in July to cover CalSTRS costs. So the projected, overall budget that we had projected at that time was $304.8 million. We are still at $304.8 million. We haven't moved or slipped in the timeframe or the budget, so we're very happy about that. We will be asking for additional money through a BCP at that, during the budget process as well because originally, when the board approved the BCP in 2013, there was a gap between the funding and what the budget was approved. And we had agreed that we would be funding the gap of $38 million through our technology appropriations over that five-year period that we have appropriated every year. And now that we're moving into a longer period of time and we have a $53 million gap from the original budget to the newly projected budget, we need to determine what we can cover with our current appropriations and what we will need to ask the legislature. And then we need to have the timeframe and the spending authority approved by them as well. So we will be coming back in July for the budget approval and then the appropriation needs will be incorporated into our budget process through a BCP. So I hope that that was helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Kassandra. I think this will set the context. So this, the graphics, I think you all have the placemat in front of you. This beautiful graphic represents our journey to success and the bike represents where we are in the journey. And the bottom of the graphics, you will see the objectives of the project, why we are doing this project. I think you will appreciate that team put together this one in a very thoughtful manner that you will see the peaks of FR1 and FR2 is a little bit more, it's not too much scale in there, but it will show you how much the complexity in the each rollout. So FR1 is not that big, but FR2, as we keep saying, that is very complex and bigger rollout. So you will see there, this is like it's a one-stop shop for anyone who's coming in. They say where, why we are doing the project, where we are in the project, where we are heading in the project. And in the back of that placemat, you will see the metrics. In there, the request came from a few board member, you know, how we can put together where we, what is in the budget, how is the scope and schedule we are managing, what is the risk level and then how the testing is progressing. So I want to shout out a few folks in the communication team and the change management team and the project management team worked together to put this graphic in front of you, as well as the metrics, the quality management team and our oversight vendors that provide the input. And now this is, we will refresh this map, this placemat every time when we meet. And I was talking to Kassandra yesterday, I think we will add another placemat where we will provide the overall, the history of the project. I think that's maybe is a good, yeah, I think that's a very good feedback, Dana and all provided. So I think we will add that one. I think it will provide all the context for the project. So as any project, we have, yeah.
Before we go on, because of the conversation that we had last time and you developed this placemat, I just want to say thank you for being so receptive to that and putting that together really quickly for this meeting. And I really appreciate efforts to take in the whole scope of the project and then another one.
We really appreciate your, you know, continuous, you know, reaching out to us and saying, how about this, how about that? I think this will, is very engaged, you know, I, really, I think not me and our whole team, you know, just think like, if you are so engaged and then how we can provide you the information at your level where you can make a decision. Thank you so much. So the project governance is really, when we start the project, we establish the governance, strong project governance is the key component to make any project successful. It helps ensure we are executing the project effectively. So in our project governance, when we started this, as still as this, when we started the project, it's a three-tier. It's of you guys, you know, teacher retirement board, and then we have executive oversight and then we have a project management team. And then you will see that from the top to bottom is just direction and approval as needed. And then from bottom up, we provide the inform and the ask rate, any, anything is coming out. And it's very, the governance is very well around, supported by our two independent oversight vendors. IPOC, you know, is reporting to you all and then IBNV reporting to Kassandra. So I think it's a very effective, we are executing this one from day one in the project and I can say that 92, 95% all the decision is happening in the project level. So I, I think it's a very effective, we are executing this one from day one in the project, and I can say that 92, 95% all the decision is happening in the project level, whenever it's just going to our level, I, I think is just, is very nimble. Before I will jump into here, I think, just like I mentioned, that since Prashant is leading this effort, we have made some changes, and the org structure is a little different. So I just want Prashant to take over and just explain why we're doing this.
Thanks, Ashish. It's my honor and privilege to lead a very hardworking and passionate team. I feel fortunate to be part of this, the group for last eight months, and this team really understand this mission very well. They clearly understand why it's important for our organization, for our members and employers. So I said, I think, to me, I really feel fortunate to be surrounded by the team who already understand this mission well, and we just have to work together from now onwards. And I also want to thank you for your continuous interest and guidance to us. And in the past, we have been able to share some of the working demos with you, and, and your interest in the project is very motivating to us. It tells us that you appreciate the work the team is putting together to make this a success. So thank you for all your support and guidance to the, to the team. Before, as she said, that we did a reorg a few months back, and before we, I got into details to what that reorg was, I won't talk about why we did the reorg in the project team. So as you all know, this is a business-focused, business outcome-driven project. I like to call it transformation, because it will redefine and enhance many of the business processes that we have in place at this point of time, and it will provide enhanced services to our members and employers. And technically, technology is a critical partner, they are enabling this transformation for us and members and employers. For the overall success, it's important that we build a system that meets core business needs, but it is also equally important for us to ensure that our staff, our members and employers are able to use it. So it's, it's a two-side thing, build a good system and then make sure the users are able to use it. So with that in mind, we, with that in mind, we, we got all the three components together, business, technology, and transformation readiness. And transformation readiness essentially means does three things for us. They support change management activity throughout the organization, they provide learning and development activities, which is also known as training, and they also support the, they also develop that to be business processes, the future business processes that we are going to use for the organization to run the business. Business and technology on the top, they are partners to build a good system. Technology transformation readiness is partnering with them to make sure that we know how to use the system that business and technology is trying to put together. So as you can see, that there, there is a interdependency, they, they need to count on each other to make this project a big success from all around perspective, not just from system delivery perspective. And Transformation Readiness Team is led by Jeff Jimmer, and Business Teams is led by Jennifer and Gina, and Aman is helping, leading the technology component around it. They are extremely well supported by their, the hardworking and passionate team with them. And as I said before, that these three components needs to work together very, very well. They, they need close collaboration, they need effective communication to get the best out of, for the organization. And when we have put them under one common umbrella, that way we have, we can have better across-team communication and as well as within the team communication. It eliminates the silos within the organization, within the project team. In the next slide, we have, we are sharing some of the critical pieces that each of those three teams does. Transformation Readiness, for example, deals with the change management, learning development, and process, business process readiness. Business Teams helps with the user acceptance, acceptance testing, and business requirement clarifications. Technical Team does data conversion, reporting, and, and many other things. They do lot, lot many things, but we just have listed some of the key ones, just to give a sense of what these components are up to. And the overlapping essentially between those groups is indication that they work together, they have dependency on each other. The next slide is, and so far, we spoke about what are the core components, but these core components need support from lot many other entities in the organization, whether it's a legal, procurement, project management office, for example, to manage the budget and manage the risk and issues and many other things. We work with public affairs to ensure that we are making the most effective communication with our stakeholders, whether it's inside or outside stakeholders. And we are certainly well supported by the executive steering committee on the top. We meet bi-weekly to provide update and take any guidance that we need to run the project smoothly.
So we just throw this one, the number, so this will give you a, a little bit more perspective, and you know, why we are keep saying this is a large project. We have a hundred, more than hundred staff, passionate and working day in, day out. We have 350 staff working as a, we call this subject matter expert when we needed them. This project is a six-plus-year project. We have a 40 work stream in this project. We have 3,000, more than 3,000 requirements, and to support that, we had to create 10,000-plus test cases. So you see the magnitude when we just talk about the project is complex and big, I think this will just give you a little sense, you know, why we all keep saying this is a big project. So before I will go over, I think I will hand it over to Cassandra about the budget, and you've already heard a few times, but.
Yeah, and this is just, just an illustration of the approved budget, the interim approved budget, and then what we'll, we will be coming back to finalize the budget in 2000, in the July meeting. So I don't really have anything other to speak about.
I think I can just say one thing, I can add there, that just like Cassandra is saying, that we came here in July, we put 304.8. Since then, we didn't add a single penny in this, so I think.
We have not added a single penny or a single day.
A single day.
So we are, which is saying quite a bit.
Yeah. And this is also, the request came from you all, that how we can show you, you know, how much the money we are paying to CGI and how, what is actual and what is projected. We can refine based on your feedback. I think at this moment, we are just showing what is our one rate in the budget.
Yeah, this is, so just, that was just illustrating what's been consumed, and then at the far right on the CalSTRS staff is just the gap that we will be closing with the new budget approval.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Cassandra. Prashant.
Thanks, Ashish. So in the, in the next few slides, in the next three slides rather, we are going to share updates about each of the three function rollouts that is shown, showing the placement. And on the top left corner, we are showing the overall status for that functional out one, and underneath, we have, we have listed some of the major activities which are happening within that functional out. On that, on the left bottom side, we are sharing the risk rating associated with this function rollout. And on the right side, we have listed some of the top challenges that are, that we are working through, and, and we have listed the mitigations that we have in place around it. So for the function rollout one, overall status is green, and the activities underneath are, are going pretty well as planned, with one small exception around the contractor acceptance testing. This is yellow just because we are late by a week at this point of time. And this delay, at this point of time, is very manageable, we have enough buffer, and it does not pose any risk to our go-live date by any means. And Team CGI is pulling in more resources to bring it back on track. However, at this point in time, I will say that there is no risk to the go-live, and we are looking pretty good from the FR1 perspective. And employer, employer engagement, employer adoption of the functional out one is, in the, in the, in this new system, is very important for us. So Team, Employer Readiness Team, along with the Public Affairs and the Project Team, we have done a extensive outreach already, and we continue to do it to make sure that employers are informed, engaged, and we prepare the onboarding plan with them so that, so that we can define how their journey is going to look like with the new system, and we can bring them onboard with all the functionality tested and working before we go, go out with the function rollout two. For the function rollout two, as Ashish said, it's the biggest rollout that we have, and it's the most complex one. It covers functionality like enrollment contributions, calculations, payments, refunds, and many more things. Overall status for FR2 remains green, and all the activities are, are, are going as planned. The only exception is user acceptance testing. The reason it's yellow is because we are a little behind in terms of planning within certain business areas within the organization. But again, we have mitigation plan in place to bring it back on track. It does not pose any risk in terms of our go-live opportunities. And just because it's complex, it's big, we have concurrent overlapping tasks that are running through to, to, to take it to the finish line, and, and we, as a team and oversight team, we are perfectly monitoring the planning, and they're monitoring for the resources to make sure that project team got the resources that they need to successfully take it to the finish line. It, it's a hard balance to maintain sometime, because we, as an organization, need to run operations, and we also need to support projects. So this is a fine balance between running operations and running the project and take it to the finish line. But so far, I think we, we believe we can, can make it happen with the plan that we have in place. For the functional out three, right now, the overall status is green. Again, the, we are on the step one, which is requirement confirmation. We started the requirement confirmation phase, we call it fit gap, last month, and we are going to wrap it up sometime in July. We are, we are about 40% done so far, and we are making progress as planned for the requirement confirmation phase. Sorry. Technical, people can't make. So is there any question you may have on, on this slide so far? I'll be happy to take any question.
When you were talking about the functional rollout one, which is slide, I don't know what the number is, 16, right? So what you're showing us is a status update for a month, correct?
Yeah.
So between what happened in March and what's happening.
Yeah.
I mean, last month, right? Because it's May now, but, okay. And what, I guess I was just wondering, what's the timeframe when we talk about employer adoption and success? And the functional rollout one is to employer readiness, what's, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, so what's the timeframe for this employer readiness that we're communicating with employers? I mean, over what span of time are we doing that?
So, so we are going live with functional out one in October of this year, and the next functional out FR2 is in October 2021. So we have about two years to bring employers onboard in this journey.
October 19 is when we'll officially start the.
Onboarding.
Onboarding, okay. But we are communicating with employers now, right?
Right, right. So I, I think we have a statistics, I, I think overall ERPs, you know, we reaching out them, is around 83%, we already reach out, and the team is doing a very good job to how we can engage. I think they are taking all the opportunity to engage 100%, to come to the 100%, and just see what are the challenges they are facing and how they can come sooner than later.
Okay. I don't see any other questions from board members.
I have, I have one on the.
Okay, punch in there. Yep. Dana?
So in the write-up, when we're talking about the rulemaking and the new file format, do you want me to ask that question now or?
No, sure.
Later, okay. So when we've been talking about that, we've been talking about all our, our direct reporting and things like that, and so, but in this write-up, we've talked about the secure employer website, and it says that SO has more than 3,000 active users. And so we had all the direct reporting and, so we've tried to contact them, but we're also contacting these 3,000 active users. Who all are these active users and what all? I just, I guess I want to get a grasp of who these people are and what they use the website for. So would these be individual districts that are feeding information in as well? So districts have the ability to change employee information, they don't have to do that through the direct reporter? Hi, Christine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Christine Bruseno, I'm the Director of Member and Employer Account Services. So 3,000 active users in SO represent the 90 report sources and any access that they've allowed to, at the district level, to view enrollments. So just because they're an active user doesn't mean they're actually reporting in the system, it means that they may be accessing to take a look if a member is already enrolled, and so that they can, so the frequent flyers we talk about, sometimes we, they will look to see if they're actually actively enrolled and already a member before they enroll them as a member, that type of thing.
But then do these act, these users on SO, do they have the ability to change information?
Not all of them. It depends on the access that the report source has allowed them. So every report source has an administrator for access to determine what role they have in the system.
And that rolls through the reporting agency, so is, okay.
Yes, controlled at the source.
Okay, so say my county, it could be that the county office has locked all that down, and they're the only people that get to change information.
That's right.
But every school district could have multiple people within the district just to go in and look at information.
As well as at the source. So for our larger school districts, they have many, many staff, they have retirement teams. For example, I know in LAUSD, there are over 15 staff there, and then they, depending on how many districts are interacting with the system, you can imagine how that rolls out.
Yeah, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. It's the first time I heard that, so I wanted to get my arms around it, thank you. And I just looked at my note, how do we, whose responsibility is to keep their access information current? Is it the reporting agencies?
Yes, we do partner with them. So within my division, we have a systems support group that is responsible for every six months to do a sweep of those users, and if they aren't active in the system, their access is deleted. And so, yes, it is up to the source to ensure that it's updated, but we also do have a control point to ensure that access isn't out there floating.
And do we have access to their, because they're accessing it through this, through a, through a portal to us, it's not like we can capture their information.
Capture who's using it? They do log in, so we do have their login information, so in.
So we can push information out to them through their login?
Yes.
All right. So then I would just, we've asked you to try to contact as many possible contacts as you possibly can, and so thank you for including this information, you're, you're pushing it out as, as broadly as I think you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Any more question? Go. Okay. The next two slides are new, we, we never shared in the past with you, but as Graham mentioned in the last board meeting, testing is the next big activity in this project. It's, it's a very important activity. Through testing, we determine whether our requirements have been met or not, whether system is functioning as we expected or not. So in this chart, we are trying to share two pieces of information, how well we are doing from the test case execution perspective, and how well we are doing from the pass rate perspective. So, so the, what you see in the orange color is essentially the test case execution piece of the chart, and what you see in the green is the pass rate chart. The, the solid line, the solid orange line is indication that what we, what we have planned for in our schedule go-live. And the, and the shaded orange color is telling us how we are doing in terms of execution. So, so from both execution and pass rate perspective, you can see that we are pretty, we are very close, but there's a little gap here towards the, towards right side of it, and that, that's the reason we had contractor acceptance testing as yellow in the FR1. But I said, this is a, this, this is, we are anticipating to be delayed by one week, and we have enough buffer in our plan not to risk the go-live date at this point of time. The next slide, next chart is for FR2. We divide, just because FR2 is complex and big, we had to divide it into two, two portions. The first, first part is, is mainly for the disability and the, and the service retirement, and there are around 3,500 test cases that we are trying to test in, in this phase. We started testing last month, and this testing is going to continue throughout this year. So far, we are slightly ahead of the schedule that we planned, but this is kind of a little too early to, to predict the future. But so far, we are looking good based on what we have done at this point of time.
Sorry.
Thank you, Prashant.
Hang on a second, I've got a question from Joy.
So.
Hang on one second, Joy?
Thank you, um so thank you, so um Prashant or or Ashish, could you just um, could you just explain to me? What what's the, what are we actually, what are we testing in FR one? And then what are we testing in FR two?
So um I I I will start and Ashish, you can jump in. So for FR one, um uh FR one functionality, so 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 as you saw in the placement, I think uh three function rollouts have their distinct functionality that we had to accomplish through those function rollout. So for the, in the function rollout one, we are trying to prepare uh uh the environment for the members so that they can submit their files and we can process those files. So that type of functionality is being tested in the FR one.
So that's that's testing, so that's not testing the employer's ability to use the system? It's testing the member's ability to access their data in the system?
Well, we are testing the ability for them to submit their files, employer to submit their file into our system. And we are testing the ability to make sure that we can process those files successfully within the benefit connect.
So it, let me just clarify, because I think you said member, Prashant, but it's employer, that, yeah, so.
Yes, yes, I mean, it's employers, correct.
And then for FR two?
For FR two, as I said, that uh that we have functionality like, uh i- i- if you go back to the FR two uh slide, essentially, we are covering, we are covering uh enrollment, contribution, calculation, payment. So so this is essentially all the, all the business tools that we have in place, all the business process that we apply on the, on the contribution line that we get. All those business tools are going to get baked in in this function rollout one. And what we are testing in the part A, so we have disability, we have service retirement, we have survivor benefit and financial reporting. In part A, we are testing the system functionality for disability and service retirement at this point of time. In part B, we are going to cover survivor benefit and the functional, and the financial service related functionality.
So this is really the calculation of the retirement benefits.
Okay.
On its biggest, what's the biggest base? And the other one is the employer submitting contribution data files from the employer perspective.
Okay, thank you.
So this is very critical, actually, because of the business rules in the start. And now I think it's a, it's a totally, we have to port in into the new system and we had to test that one.
And test the accuracy of the calculation, okay.
Okay, so these, the challenges and mitigation, these are not the new challenges. Um executive leadership and oversight are very closely monitoring that one. The main is the resource utilization and the communication flowing between CGI and us. Um I'm just happy to say that Megan may be here and the CGI, the project manager is here. I think we are weekly meeting with them, is anything is coming out. We have right then, you know, just not, we are not waiting for four mon, four weeks or three weeks, kind of. It's a very clear communication and we are on the table if whatever the hard topics coming out and we just discuss. And if we have to escalate, we'll escalate to Cassandra and the executive teams. So we just, but we both, the oversight and the executive leadership, we are watching very closely in this. I think before I go to the upcoming activities, I think we shared in the past that we have a fourth demo and the May third, we did the fourth demo and I'm very happy that team did very flawlessly and there is not many gaps came out, I think it's very little. So the demo, uh this, that was the fourth demo and each demo gave us a little bit more confidence that, you know, we are building the right system. We are very much in the midst of all these activities. We are concluding the our functional rollout one CAT, you know, contract acceptance testing in June. We will be rolling out the UAT and I think we'll be finishing that one als- also is in August timeframe, but we'll starting that one. We complete the functional rollout uh three fit gap. I think this will be a big milestone for us because then we'll know the overall project, you know, what we are getting in in our FR three and FR one and FR two, we'll close the loop for all the rollouts. Employer readiness, just like Prashant mentioned, is a big piece. I think the team is very dedicated and working very passionate and reaching out to the employer. And we have a very good ratio right now is eighty-three percent complete, but we want to have a hundred percent uh in in there. And just like Prashant also mentioned, it's a two-year we have for the employer to adopt the system. So we are very positive that we will have a good success ratio in there. And lastly, uh the fifth functional route is coming in in September twenty-six and twenty-seven. This is a two-day, is a special one because we are taking whatever we demo, uh demoing for last one to fourth demo. So we'll adding more functionality to just to show um what is there. I think the scenario will be fleshed out in June and July timeframe. And then I think we are happy to share if you have interest to come and see the demo. So we're done, I think we can pass it on to Graham or if you have any question for us?
Hang on one second.
When you say demo, it gets me all excited.
Yeah, I know, she gave us a, you know, the rain check kind of, you know, whenever you want, you know, just shout out and Karen will be here, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
So speaking of demo, for the, for the benefit of the others, can you describe what that looks like? What what the participant or or we as participants can see or what is actually discussed in that demo?
Yeah, I think you want to. Sure, I I will start, so so in the demos, the purpose of the demo uh is to make sure that whatever we discuss with team CGI in terms of system design, can they, can they show us back that if they have designed it the same way or not? So so essentially, team uh uh CG, uh CGI and Calisters work together to determine what functionality they would like to see in those demos. And once they have determined that functionality, they work together to to uh come up with the scenarios that they share uh ahead of time with the audience, that these are scenarios we are going to run through that demo day. And and the main audience uh in in those demos are the people who have been part of the system design conversation so that they understand what we told team CGI. And if the, if the same functionality that we told them, can they, can they, can they show us back whether it's working the same or not? So it it's more of a verification of what has been designed, what has been told to them and see uh if it meets Calisters' business need or not. So that's a way to verify ahead of our system testing.
And the room was full.
The the rooms are usually plentiful and and we also record those videos uh for the benefit of organization and and as a part of change management activity, as a part of our learning activities, we share those demos across organization, across the floors. And people can watch those demos, the functionality in their own sweet time as well.
Yes, because I I I was surprised when I came the last time because all the different parts of the organization were here and how everybody talks to each other. And so there is a lot of communication going on, a lot of information being passed, so I was very excited and very impressed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to Graham, I just, Prashant, I, it's great to have you up here because I I feel like the more I've been diving into the project, the more I've realized that, you know, you're, you know, working with Ashish, you're really on the ground, you kind of are eyes and ears over all the staff that are really doing the work and the staff that are in the building right now as you maybe watch this, we just want to say thank you. Because we, to to steal a phrase from Chris Aylman, our CIO, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And um, you know, I've been on the board now to watch the beginning of this and and hopefully the the end of it. And I just know fatigue in my own life, working on big projects or just kind of methodically, the pending, you know, the 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 funding solution. There were a lot of things that have taken us a long time to achieve and I know how that wears on people. And um and and so we just want to do a shout out for the staff that we really appreciate all the hard work that your team's doing, Ashish, your leadership. But it's it's great to to see you because I know that you're really kind of on the ground, leading the troops. And we appreciate, it takes a lot of energy and time and commitment to kind of keep moving forward. So we have a lot of faith in you and the team and keep up, keep up the good work.
Right, yippee.
And uh Graham, why don't we move to you and you give us your kind of second pair of eyes on where the project is at this point?
Sure, um so good morning, everyone. Graham Finley with Grant Thornton, here to present our regular independent project oversight report. And I would say as a, you know, as a summary, it's really a continuation of the story that we were telling at the last board meeting. And to be honest, I think I'm going to be here just confirming a lot of the things that Ashish and Prashant have already told you. So at a, the highest level, so the project is on schedule and on budget. The focus we've had around transparency and communication between Calisters and CGI over the last few months, we are continuing to see the sustainment of that, which everybody is very happy around. Just to, you know, validate on what was just said about the the last demonstration. So, you know, demonstration number four happened um on the third, it was well received. I think again, it's achieving the objective of both validating that there are not unanticipated gaps in the software as well as, you know, building confidence that, you know, this is actually real software that has been built and it's going to meet the the business needs of Calisters. So again, that was, that was pretty positive and we're all looking forward to the, to the fifth demonstration um in September. I would say to the extent there's a risk to the project, it's it's pretty much what Prashant and Ashish were discussing. And it's the, you know, the intense pace of activity over the next several months, particularly in these overlapping testing activities. We've got several different testing work streams and um, you know, it, we're pretty much on schedule to date. I think, you know, that the gaps that were mentioned, that's not an unusual thing um to see the, you know, when you've got a trend line around testing, you dip a little bit below the trend line, then everybody pushes a little bit and gets you back to the trend line and then maybe you dip again and you you push again, but you're trying to stay on that trend line. And that's what's been happening and to date, we have no reason to to expect that the project wouldn't be hitting those milestones. But just because there's so much to do in such a compressed timeframe, I think that's, you know, that that's probably the most significant risk for the project, you know, in the, in the near term. One other thing I would just, as a, I guess, an editorial statement, you shouldn't take for granted the graphs that were being shown to you because it's not universal that clients get access to this kind of information on all of these types of projects. And the level of insight you have to what's really going on behind the scenes within the testing process, where CGI is testing process. It's not Calisters doing the testing. It's not, you don't always get that on all projects, but it's a very good thing to have for all these reasons. From a looking forward perspective and thinking ahead maybe to the July board meeting, which is the next time we'll be setting together, we'll be focusing on probably three main things. The first is just again, that continuance of the transparency and collaboration among the teams. The second is the replacement of the business sponsor with Andrew's departure. And, you know, obviously, there's, there's a search underway, so we're looking for that to conclude in a successful manner. And then the third is just staying on schedule and hitting the milestones around the, you know, the start of user acceptance testing for FR one, you know, the FR two testing and all the other activities that are in, you know, in in flight. And I think if we can get through those, those three areas and still be in a good position come the July board meeting, I don't see why we wouldn't be upgrading the entire project to green. So that's, that's what we're going to be watching. Um I did want to talk a little bit more about testing, just since it's the topic du jour. In November, as we'd started this whole conversation about this is really going to be a testing project for the next year, that uh there were some things we we wanted to talk about, a little bit of an education, um topic, I guess, just some of the things that we look for in testing, um for these large projects, just as best practices and things to be watching for. And I wanted to just report back, now that it's been about six months since we had that conversation, just, and again, it's validating really that the project is doing the things that we would expect a project of this scale to be doing. So the first one was, you know, don't be tempted to address schedule delays by cutting testing. We're a little bit early in the, you know, in the life of the project to that pressure really to hit, but it is something you see uh on a lot of projects where they start getting into schedule pressure and the thing that gets cut is either testing or training, you know, and neither are, you know, a good idea in the long term. The project has really held, you know, to those dates, particularly around UAT, there's an enormous investment in time in user acceptance testing that the project has um, you know, planned for. The second area was around using real converted data for testing, you know. There's a reason to manufacture data for testing in the lower level of tests where you have to try and exercise all the different business logic and you want to make sure you're testing every scenario. But really, when you're testing anything that's more of an end-to-end, you know, processes in a, in a flow, you want to be using real data because, you know, you think you know what's in there, but you don't really know until you take the actual data. And so that's what's happening for all of the contract accepted testing and will be happening with user acceptance testing as well, which is going to, I think, increase the the level of confidence that the conclusions around tests passing are going to follow through to the production system. The third area we'd mentioned was this idea of focusing on business processes when you're testing and not just testing the system functionality. And this again is something that particularly in the user acceptance test area, um that the project is planning to test by business process. And there's a, you know, there's a, there's a business transformation team is pulling together these two B processes and they'll be used as a framework for the user acceptance test process. And we think that's particularly important because it's possible to test individual steps in a process and they all appear to work, but then you string them together end-to-end, you find it doesn't really. So for UAT to focus on the end-to-end test process is really important. And then the last piece was to establish a set of objective criteria for both entering and exiting each phase of the testing. So you plan ahead, you know, what does success mean and what's efficient progress for us to move from one, one phase to the other? You never expect to have zero defects going from one phase to another, but you do want to make sure that any defect you allow through are manageable and usually not at any sort of higher critical level. And so there are, um, there are, there are criteria in place. I think there's still a few details to be worked out on some of the lower levels. But in general, there are criteria in place both for exiting contractor acceptance testing as well as entering user acceptance testing. So that gives the project of an objective way to gauge where they are. So that's all positive and we'll continue, you know, to to monitor that this continues over the next couple of months. So really, those are really the comments I wanted to share, so I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, Karen?
Going back to when you said using, um, one of the issues was re- using real conversion data. That means a real person's information?
Yes and no, so there's a, there's a concept of, you know, the people call about red, red data and green data, right? But the, yeah, so you convert data, you can convert data in from start, for example, and it's got all the real true data. But there's a way to anonymize it in such a way that there's no personally identifiable information in there, but it doesn't lose all the business rules, so you can continue to use it for testing. But there's no way anybody who's, you know, has access to the test data can identify any individual person. And that's a secure, you know, it's a privacy provision that's in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you, um so thank you. And Graham, I appreciate the the points you raise about what we should be considering in testing because I, I think sometimes there can be a temptation when you go off schedule to see where you can make, make cuts. But, you know, I think the board has had discussions over the past few years that getting it right, given the the scale of the project and the impact on our, the employers and the members is is critically important. So just, um, you know, appreciate the comments. I also had a question, uh it it looked like your, your team is also doing some outreach to some of the employers to sort of validate, um, to to sort of check in with them and do outreach about the, um, can't think of the right words right now, but but, you know, how the, how the testing is, their readiness assessment. Um, so is that, has that already begun or?
It hasn't, um, we're, we're working with staff around the timing of it because I think I might have mentioned this last time that we want to be careful about getting in the middle of the new file format, um, you know, comment period because we don't want to confuse people about the purpose and, you know, we're not there to invite comments about the format, right? So we we want that process, process to play through.
Okay.
And then we'll sort of layer in after that so we can be clear about the purpose of it. And we think the timing is going to work out okay because we can get to the um, the employer, the external reporting partners before we get to the point that anybody's going to start onboarding. So we'll have an opportunity to take any lessons before we actually get to the point of kicking it off.
Great, so it'll be sort of an extra set of eyes or ears on checking in with a sample of those partners?
Yeah, and it's really just, just to get a sense of whether they felt that they were able to ask the questions they wanted to ask and if they felt they were heard.
Got it, okay, great, thank you.
I want to shout shout out for a couple of things. The testing, I think Graham mentioned about the testing, I think our IVN vendor is down in the weed in there. They provided a lot of support in this and they worked together with the CGI to, came up with the metrics and all. So I want to give them kudos that, you know, where we are. And then last thing, I think Daniel, we just, last minute, we asked Daniel, can you put together this printout? And I know Daniel is very short-staffed and Daniel, Brian, and they right away, they just give, you know, so thank you, Daniel, for that.
More and more, I think we're appreciating the communication, right? Because I think the more we.
I don't know how we can do without Daniel and I have assistant Marty and she's terrific, you know. She's really, I think, without the support structure, I don't think we can function optimal way, so.
Yeah, it takes a team, uh Bill?
Uh, thank you, uh I want to commend the team, this is a massive project and uh the manner in which you've, you know, approached it has shown discipline and thoroughness and and for which I, as a new board member, I'm deeply impressed. I haven't been around an organization that has done something like this, this large and of this scope. And you have demonstrated that you put a lot of care and and discipline into it, so I want to commend you. Uh, there's one question I had of of Graham. Uh, there's one question I had of, of Graham. In your, uh, presentation, at one point you said, uh, on the vendor and contract management issues, you know, as a team CGI provides insights into their processes, additional questions will be raised. It's important for those questions to be followed up on and answers or clarifications provided. You know, as a fiduciary, I just want to make sure that you see the process that has been put in place by our team is sufficient enough to address those.
Yeah, I, as much as anything, it's really about, um, it, it had been about the level of interaction and dialogue on a day-to-day basis. And I think some of the changes that have happened over the last two to three months, I would say, have really sort of ticked up that level of dialogue. I think there's a, you know, there's a, another cycle of rolling wave planning that's going to kick off. And to be honest, we've, we're feeling, I think, more sort of enthusiastic about that process in terms of the way it's probably going to play out, just because, um, I think the, the level of day-to-day interaction has been, you know, it's been, it's been pretty good. And I would anticipate, um, you know, that being a relatively smooth process.
And so in subsequent, uh, sessions, you will keep your eye on that and tell us if that is occurring?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Okay.
Uh, yeah, just one, um, one last comment, I, I just wanted to share that, um, I, I found the, the presentation on here really helpful. So I, I appreciate Graham, your comment that we're getting a level of detail that not all, um, entities might, might typically be able to have, but seeing it, I, I find helpful, especially looking at prior status compared to current status, it helps to not have to flip back to remember what, what we saw the last time we met. So, um, I appreciate that, appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, so?
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes our, um, open session for the regular board meeting.